With that, I'd like to open up to any comments from the general public this evening.
Alan Dunham, living at Card Street, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank the school department, Superintendent Sorrell, Principal Neep, and Vice Principal Evans for the SADD mobilizing the community meeting last week. It was very well attended, and it's a good start. I was very happy to see the number of people that were there, and this is an effort that really is going to have to continue, and you're going to need the help of the community. This is something the school has been spearheading and really taking the lead on, and now it's time for the community to step up. And I hope that this meeting we had on February 4th was just the start, and that we can really mobilize the community because the problems of drugs not only affects the students, but either directly or indirectly, every single person in town. It's something we really need to fight and keep on fighting. And I'm very appreciative of the school taking the lead on this, and I think you should be commended for that.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. The next meeting will be March 4th.
Fourth at 6:30.
6:30. I believe we're going to have it in the cafeteria, so people will be a little more comfortable, and we're going to divide into working groups, so, at the middle high school.
And I believe we will be hearing more about that in a little bit from Mr. Neep. So, welcome. Any other comments from the general public?
Liz, was the Y contacted about that at all? I mean, does that tend to increase ability for people to come if you do something like that?
We did not do babysitting for this event, but we had no idea how many people were going to show up. At first, I was told there'd be 30 to 40 from the website. Then later in the afternoon, it turned to 75, and then it turned out to be about 100 people. So, we can definitely get why babysitting they provided for us, so.
Great idea, James. Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the general public, we'll move on to comments from the EAPC. Welcome up, Donna.
Good evening, everyone. I wasn't planning on saying this, but I'll piggyback on your comments. Plymouth North High School has its own TV show, and they did a mini documentary on the issues in the Plymouth County as far as the drugs. So, if anybody gets a chance, I think it's floating around Facebook right now, but I think if you go to the Plymouth North High School site, you'll be able to see it.
Gary wouldn't let me post it on our website yet because they're doing some big press release about it, but as soon as they do, I'll get it to cable.
I just press released that, sorry. Sorry, Gary. Sorry, Dr. Mestis. I'm sorry with that.
But we will have it on our website soon.
It was very, very well done, and they interviewed a judge, the police department, guidance counselors. It was very, very eye-opening to a lot of the people in the communities. So, if you get a chance, and when it's released, to check it out, it's well worth it. It was unbelievable. So, here with a little bit of good news, the MTA once again has the grant for the masked child, and I still have money left. So, that it's been a tough, tough winter. So, if there are any families out there that need a little bit of extra support, or teachers that know of students, paraprofessionals, secretaries, anyone that know of a student that could benefit from this grant, it covers medical expenses, it will cover some kind of dental things, it covers books, supplies, materials, field trips, educational activities, some prescriptions, and I have a $250 grant for winter clothing. It's been a tough, tough winter. So, if the teachers out there, or the principals, or anybody have somebody they can send it my way, I'll go shopping. We don't do gift cards, of course. We pick up the things that the students need, and I send in the, I will pay the person that takes it out of pocket, and then I will wait for the MTA to reimburse the EAPC. So, I would love to spend all of the money, so if you're interested in that. I can be reached at president@plymouthcarvereducators.com, or everybody knows where I am. So, I really would like to spend every single dime. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And I'm sure Liz and the administration can help in identifying those that are in need, so thank you. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the January 13 regular session meeting.
And then, there then, we're going to do the student advisors captain first.
Well, my apologies. I'm getting ahead of my eyes. Yes, please come on up. We have captain's council?
Student council.
Student council. Stand corrected again. You're welcome. Do you want to state your name so we know who you are?
I'm Jess.
Ms. Sam. Hi, Jess.
Okay, so we're a part of the Eboard on student council, and for the mid-year's week, the week after, we did a stress-free week where one day we did like pajama day, one day we served free hot chocolate in the morning, one day we played music at lunches, and then one day we did Spread the Word to end the word. Like, we had a banner, and we had the students come and sign if they wanted to. And we had about 125 students and staff that signed it to end the R-word. We also did during mid-year week, a student volleyball tournament.
With captain's council.
With the captain's council. It was about 11:00, so right after the two mid-years were over, and they stayed and did like different brackets, and it was an entire volleyball tournament. And then the winner is going to play a faculty team at the Spirit Week pep rally in March.
And then on Sunday, January 26, the High Carver High School Student Council traveled to Winthrop, and we had a polar plunge, and we raised money for the Special Olympics. We raised about $350, and about 35 high school students and Mr. Chuska plunged into the cold water.
Did you guys go in?
I did.
I was not there.
There's a picture in your packet there.
It's cute. It's cold.
And then this week, we're selling chocolate-covered strawberries at lunches.
For Valentine's Day.
For Valentine's Day.
That's great.
Nice.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, does the school feel less stressed now after that week?
No.
I think it's fun.
I think we all need a little bit of that, don't we?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we think the captain's council will be joining us, or perhaps?
I don't know.
No, I don't know if there's a captain council.
Okay. They're all at the game.
Right. If they do arrive, we can shuffle around. So, with that, we will now move to the approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, except I'd like one amendment to change it from 2013 to 2014.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it is unanimous. With that, we'll move to communications. Speaking of which...
Yes. So, the communications is picture of the kids at the polar plunge, and they were quite a big group, represented up with them in Winthrop. They're much braver than I could be. I can't even imagine jumping in the ocean right now. And I just wanted to inform you that the video from the students talking about the dual enrollment with Cape Cod Community College, I had the CCA TV excerpted just the kids talking about it, and I sent it over to make peace and to the college president, so they know what we're doing. So, I just want to make you aware of that. And then, under communications, if you don't mind if I add something, is that all right? We have samples of the school calendar, and we usually present two options. Option A, begin school the, for students, the Tuesday before Labor Day, for teachers, the Monday before Labor Day, which is traditionally where we begin. But at the Christmas winter break, it closes for two entire weeks, being that the Christmas holiday and New Year's Day fall on Thursdays. Sometimes we consider this. Last time it happened, seven years ago, we did have two-week break. And then, without snow days, that we put our last day on June 17. With, if we used all the five built-in snow days, that would put us on June 24, but still gives us a comfortable four days of additional snow day should we have a really bad winter, which we still have to keep thinking about since we keep having them. And then, on option B, on the other side, starts the same day, has the same number of regulars, professional development days, et cetera, but it does not give off the full two weeks. It gives off the 24th, 25th, 26th, 29th, 30th, 31st, and the 1st. But we would be in school Monday and Tuesday before the winter break, and the Friday after on January 2. This end date would, we would end with no snow days on June 12, with five snow days on Friday, June 19, which gives us a total of seven extra days. I did, there were several groups of teachers scoring, writing in here over a two-week period, and I did sort of poll those teachers from various grade levels. The predominant teacher opinion was they'd like to have two weeks, and then I polled the administrative staff, and they were a mixed bag. Some of them liked the two-week, some of them liked, you know, the shorter. So, but traditionally, the school committees made this call.
Liz, building on the graduation challenges that we had from the year before, how does that play into, say, if we had snow days that would push us, that whole, was it the 12-day issue situation that we had? Would that be affected by any of these?
Well, I think we could...
If we did it on the 12th, would that make it a challenge for any of that issues that we had?
It would be a three-day difference. It would make it three days shorter. But, so I don't see anything wrong with this as long as we didn't have 15 or something snow days.
And I like the idea of the two-week Christmas vacation because it happens so infrequently. You know, like you said, every seven years, it's kind of a special event. So, why don't we take advantage of it? That's my thoughts.
Can you open up for discussion?
I mean, I think, I don't know how dramatized this effect is, but it seems to heat up the building for those two days, and then that one day after seems to be a lot to do something when you're probably academically not going to be able to accomplish a whole lot in that timeframe either.
There is a certain amount of truth to the fact that the parents that want to go away are going to go away anyway.
Right.
Whether we give the days off or not.
Right. Well, to bring the kids back for that one day on Friday doesn't, I mean, how much focus and accomplishment are you really going to get in that day?
All these teachers, they work hard and make a focus. But, for me, I come to work on those days anyway unless I take vacation days, so I'm a bad person to ask as far as that goes. But I think they're equally educationally sound, you know.
Gina, any thoughts?
Oh, I'd vote for option A.
Okay. With that, we...
You'd entertain a motion?
Putting before a yes, I would entertain a motion on to which calendar we will approve.
I'd like to make a motion to accept option A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two-week Christmas break, there's a teacher doing out there, and I think, are you happy? Good. We aim to please.
I'm agreeing with you.
That's good.
Mr. O'Brien.
So, ready for my reports?
Yes, Liz. We'll move on to reports now.
So, for the past, this is our fourth year actually with the writing program in Carver. Many people were quite impressed with the kindergarten and first-grade writing. This is our mid-year assessment, and I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Literacy.
Great. Welcome, Michelle.
I got to grade some of the fifth-grade writing. It was really a good experience.
It is a lot of fun. Okay, so, as Liz mentioned, this is our fourth year involved with our writing initiative in the district. I just wanted to very briefly review the professional development that we've provided this year around the writing initiative. We offered a writing intervention training called Self-Regulated Strategy Development for our fourth-grade teachers this year. Last year, we trained all of the lead teachers in grades three, four, and five in that writing intervention program, as well as the inclusion of special education teachers for grades three, four, and five in that program. We'll continue to train people. It's just, it's an intervention program, so it's not something that we typically would use a full day, PD day for. We also trained the science and social studies departments in the key writing routine at the middle high school, and we've continued our work with writing consultant Gail Brer, the former Assistant Superintendent for NOS at Public Schools. She helps us to revise our rubrics and align the benchmark expectations for each grade level, K through 5, with the standards in the new mask frameworks incorporating the Common Core State Standards. So, when we use our writing data, we administer a school-wide writing benchmark assessment. Each grade level has come up with their own prompt. This year, I thought in particular the first-grade prompt was a good one to mention. They took the prompt and tried to sort of tweak it so that it was somewhat more seasonal. What we've noticed, and the fifth-grade teachers would attest to this, is when we ask the students to write about a hobby or a special activity, we tend to get almost the same sort of responses, prompt after prompt. So, if they wrote about baseball, they tend to write about baseball again. If they write about soccer in the fall, they tend to write about it again, maybe in the spring. So, we were trying to give them more options and opportunities with the writing prompt. So, first grade this year tweaked it slightly so that it reads, "Write about your favorite summer activity," or "Write about your favorite winter activity," or "Write about your favorite spring activity." And so, the seasonal twist, just remind students that they do other things besides organized sporting programs, other activities that they might enjoy with family or friends outside of school. And we think it's helped, so. That's some of the writing that I will share with you this evening. And here it is. So, think about a fun activity you enjoy in the winter, tell a story about it, and then the prompt sort of breaks it down to ask the students to tell more about what they did, who they were with, where the story took place, and then to wrap it up. How does this event end? The, after the students write, the teachers get together with an administrator, and usually I join them, and we grade all of the writing samples. We start the scoring session with a whole group score, so the entire grade-level team, the special education teacher assigned to that grade level, as well as the administrators, sit together. We read the essays, we look them over, and we really try to focus on each individual element on the rubric, and try to come to consensus so that we know that all of the scoring is valid and reliable across all scoring teams. The elements that are assessed for first grade, I thought I would share with you, are focus and ideas, which is basically the student's response to the prompt. Were they able to respond to the prompt? Were they able to develop an idea around the prompt? We assess the writing organization and the paragraph structure. We assess the introduction, supporting details, and conclusion. We assess vocabulary, the sentence type and structure, so length, complexity, as well as conventions. And for first grade, that means capitalization, punctuation, grammar, and spelling. So, this is just a very quick graph to showcase first grade's accomplishments so far this school year. In the fall, you can see about 74% of the students were in the, for the, simply to correlate it to sort of like MCAS data, we have these terms on the graph, warning, needs improvement, proficient, and advanced. But on the first-grade rubric, we don't put warning. We put emerging or progressing, more developmentally appropriate terms. But just for the purpose of our work administratively in the district, we do look at it in correlation to MCAS-style terms. So, 74% of the students were emerging or in the warning category in the fall, and you can see now in the winter only, that number has dropped to only 14%. And at this point in the winter, 53% of students are at that progressing point, and 32% have scored proficient or advanced, just in the winter. So, we know we have a long way to go, but we really think this is a lot of great progress over just one marking term. So, then I thought it would be fun to share with you some of the first-grade writing samples. So, this was a fall sample, and unfortunately, the scanning didn't really highlight the work as well as I'd hoped, so I had to sort of type it out myself. So, again, the fall prompt...
Oh, I want to read this one. I know this. My favorite activity was to swim in a pool with my friends.
Yes. So, and that was in response...
I can translate.
That was in response to the fall prompt, which was, "Write about an activity you enjoy in the summer." They actually asked them to write about a summer activity. And so, you can see how the child did. And this, so this is the same student now in the winter, and the child wrote, "Over the weekend, I went skiing with my cousins and my mommy and daddy. First, I put on my skis. Next, I went to the chairlift. Last, I went down the hill so fast." So, you can see in just one marking period, the amount of growth. The students have started to sort of develop that idea of establishing the scenario, the main idea, talking about who they are enjoying this activity with, where they're, where they are and what they're doing. They're able to use first, next, and last as sort of transitional words to help them frame or develop the entire idea. And they're still working on conclusions, as you can see, but hopefully in the spring, I can share the same students' writing with you, and you can see how they've progressed. So, thank you. This one, this slide shows where a typical first grader was just in 2012, which I thought was really interesting. So, this child had written about Harry Potter and playing with Legos. And then, if you go to the next, this is an average first-grade writing for, at this point in the school year. So, you can see just in two years, how the writing has really changed and developed. This child wrote, "In the winter, I like to make a snowman with my brother. First, I make a snowball. Next, he makes a snowball. Last, we put the snowball on and add the carrot nose. Next time, I will make it by myself." Which I thought was very reflective of the student. So, and that's it. I just wanted to take a minute to share that with you. I didn't, once I realized that the scanning quality wasn't so great, I stopped scanning the pieces of writing, but some of the students in first grade, some of our more accelerated writers at this point in the year, were using phrases like, "On a cold December morning," "I walked through the diamond-white snow." They really are understanding the idea of descriptive language, and it was just really impressive. So, we thought we would share it with you, and I look forward to sharing it with you again in the spring. Thank you.
That is, that's amazing. Thank you, Michelle. Those last two slides blew me away, though. So, you're telling me...
Yeah, in 2012.
2012, the one you put on display, that was the average student.
It's a different student.
But in the average.
Yeah, who'd scored in the average range on the same assessment. So, some things to keep in mind are, the training and professional development that we've offered to the teachers over the last couple of years has really intensified their ability to meet the needs of diverse learners. And the second thing is, we've changed the prompt slightly, which I definitely think helped to sort of, you know, the more relevant it is, the more purposeful it feels for the students. The other thing is, we've tweaked the rubric to be more in line with the standards versus the expectations that were just set forth in our curriculum. It's less important to sort of like assess the elements that are in our manuals. It's more important to assess just the global writing standards. So, we're able to do that now, and I really, I think it's made a difference. So, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's outstanding. You guys should be very proud of yourselves.
We are.
Yeah, it's very impressive, the difference between the average in 2012 and the average in 2014. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. When you have teachers who come to you and say, "I want my children to come to Carver so they can learn to write like this," you know, you know you've really won over a critical audience there, so.
I'd like the second one, Michelle said there too. Liz, a lot of that has to do with the development, the professional development that you established.
Absolutely.
The expectation is fine, but giving the people the right tools and training to do that are what really make it successful, and it definitely is showing in what's happening.
And they don't get just one dose.
Right.
You know, they get to perfect it.
It's not one and out, exactly. It's a continuum, and that shows in what's happening, I think, very much so.
And we know that the professional development days, the full days and the half-days, are a challenge for families. We know that, but it's really paid off, you know. So...
And I think when you can see the progression from kindergarten all the way through, in kindergarten, especially the first prompt, there are barely letters. They're just symbols on paper. And, you know, usually by the mid-winter, by the midpoint in the winter, it's really just a string of letters. It's not usually even words. And then by the end of the school year, those students are able to craft a sentence. So, you know, to see that, even just that amount of growth from kindergarten to first grade, and to see that now they're really close to getting the idea of a full paragraph, and that by the springtime, it will be a fully-developed paragraph. And then in second grade, by the spring, we expect three paragraphs. So, you know, the amount of growth and the expectations that build over time are really incredible, but the students are rising to the challenge, and I think we have to thank the teachers for that, so.
Great work by all.
Thank you, Michelle. So, under management and operations, we had two retirements in our custodial staff, and they retired just before the last big storm, which I think was perfect timing. And now we've, Dave Sidentop has hired Leo Chase and John Scarafoni to be the new custodians to take their places. Then, we're very happy to say that Tammy Veraka, our payroll administrator, is now going to be the Administrative Assistant for Business and Finance, and she has taken the place of Linda Jorgen, who is retiring after many years in Carver. And she's Carver citizen. She retires on April 1, and she said, "It's not a joke," so she's not coming back. And then, we recently received a letter from Barbara Wilde that she intends to retire at the end of this school year. So, that's our update. And then we have our search going for Tammy's replacement and for Pat's, and we'll keep you updated as that process goes along. So, now it's the real exciting part. The MSBA invited us to come to Boston on the first Wednesday of the snowstorm, and I'm going from Wellfleet, and I get to Hyannis, and all the lights on my dashboard go on, and I have to pull into the Subaru Place because, well, it turned out to be just a thermostat. So, I had to call Pat, and Jack Angley was going, and said, "You just have to go without me." After an hour and a half, they only got to Pembroke, and they had to turn around because they couldn't make, didn't have a snowball on the front of the truck. So, we actually did not get to attend our invitation, but, you know, it happened without us, and several people did not make it that day because it was such a bad snowy day. So, what does that mean? It's a little different than the last time we went through this in 2007. We are invited into something called eligibility period, and the eligibility period, and I just got a text from Basketball Girls once. Very excited. So, the eligibility period is when we exchange a bunch of important paperwork, and the first one is the initial certification that the town and the schools agreed to work together and to go forward with the renewed interest in our Carver Elementary School building project. And then the second part of it is to form a school building committee, and it's, that part has not changed. It's very prescriptive. You have the principal of the elementary school, the superintendent, the facilities director, citizen with construction experience, you know, a whole list of people. So, we will be, after we do our initial certification, I'll be working with the Board of Sliekman, the town administrator, and the school committee, and we will form the building committee. And then the next steps from that is we begin to work on another series of paperwork on how we will proceed to enter the capital pipeline. Now, this can take, I gave you a little handout, up to 270 days, but it doesn't have to take up to 270 days. It can, if we had not been through this before, it may, you know. But we've already, I already have all this information complete, all the things on the list, the maintenance and capital planning information, the local voter authorization would be to go into feasibility study. So, what we'll have to wait for here is the Collins Report to figure out whether we're going to go forward with B3, or whether we're going to consider a building, a brand-new building on the, Collins Center was asked to look at the middle high school site to see if they could fit another building in there. So, that should be coming out within the next two or three weeks. I don't have a firm date on that, but if, if there's, I call it start, restart, or start over. If we restart B3, we really don't need another vote. We did schematic design. We have it done. There might be a few things we need to tweak, but we wouldn't need any more money to do that because we already spent. and were reimbursed for most of it. And then you, you, you sign off on your feasibility agreement at the end of that after a vote. But since we've already done it, we wouldn't have to. However, if it is the will of the town to go forward with a brand-new building, then we have to do start over. And start over means we would have to complete feasibility all over again. We, we did do preliminary feasibility designs for a brand-new building, which could be used. You know, that can be reused. But it was on an unknown site. And that would determine whether or not we can put another well on the high school site. And since, between the time we approved B3 and now, the wells, Zone 1 of the wells have changed from 400 feet diameter to 800 feet. 800 feet diameter is about 11 acres. And the building itself and the parking lots take up about 15 acres. So we're looking at a pretty large piece of property we'd have to have. The current site where the elementary school is now has two wells. They're grandfathered in with their 412 Zone 1 diameters. That would, you know, so that piece of land, should we raise those buildings and build new again, we'd have to conform to the 800 feet diameter. So, a lot of this 270-day eligibility period depends on what the will of the community is after they hear the Collins Center report, which we don't have yet. So, but in the meantime, we have to execute this. Let's say the town wants to work with the school, the school wants to work with the town, and we are ready at this point to consider either building new, starting over or restarting where we left off before. And, but it, this initial compliance certificate doesn't say we're going to do one or the other. It just, as we have now agreed to work again with the MSBA because they've invited us back. At the end of this, we would be eligible for a feasibility study agreement. Like I said, this timeline could be extremely truncated if we started, restarted the project because we don't need all these interim steps. But if we start over, we will, we will definitely need all this time, which takes us through to October 30th. So, I wondered if you had any questions for me?
We'll open it up to the committee. Any questions for Liz regarding the process, what we know so far?
How is, talk about the first step, initial compliance certification in the town and that we're working together. How is the feedback from the town, the selectmen, town administrator?
For the new town administrator, we had a meeting with MSBA prior to being asked to go in on January 29th. And so he went to MSBA with us, the new town administrator. And the, the lead engineer on the, from the Collins Center also attended this meeting. So she could understand how we're going to work together. And it was a very productive meeting. And I, the new town administrator is very excited about the town being invited back because he realizes it's a critical need in the town. So I, and then they, this is on their agenda tomorrow night, the Board of Selectmen, because they, the first step is if you all vote to sign this document, then Lance will sign it tonight. And then tomorrow night, they will vote to sign it. So the signature is required for this document is the chief executive officer of the town. And the previous Board of Selectmen identified the town administrator as the signer on that because they are elected for shorter terms and in general, usually the town administrator is a more constant person in the town. So, and then the superintendent of schools, I say that I will do my part. And then the chair of the school committee. So we'll see what the will of the Board of Selectmen is tomorrow night. If they're going to have the chair sign it or if they're going to have the town administrator sign it. The MSBA doesn't care as long as whoever, you know, they can delegate it to whoever they want, so. But.
Anyone else? Hopefully, I know these documents were in our hands for a little while, so everybody's had a chance to kind of look over what that agreement entails. Pretty lengthy, but all encompassing.
Yeah, it's almost identical to the one we executed seven years ago.
Correct.
Motion time? Do I need to read the full thing, including the part of numbers that are saved or someone just to make a motion for the initial compliance certification for the town?
That's okay.
Except as written, yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion for the initial compliance certification for the town of Carver, for the Carver Elementary School?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say this is very exciting and I'm glad we're back on the table. And I think it's a no-brainer, as usual. And, but I hope that, Mr. Dunham, I'm glad to see you're here in support of the school, I'm sure. But I just encourage all the townspeople that are in favor of this to let your representatives know how excited you are about this as well. So that's always a key component to the democratic success of things. So, just want to make, never forget to stress that because we do get busy with our lives and, you know, we're just trying to take care of our day-to-day stuff. But this is such an important event and we're just kicking it off, obviously. But do everything we can to make this successful. So, let's work together as a town and work as hard as we can as a school board.
Well said, Barry. With that being said, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it is unanimous.
So I'll sign my name and I'll hand it over to Lance. And we have officially agreed to participate with the town as a partner to go forward with a either renovated school and some new construction or with a brand-new school.
Sounds good. And I think it's really important as we continue to move on with this process, as we get the Collins report, we continue to use this as a form to help educate the community on what's going on and we will do that as the report comes in. We'll be sharing that information as we get it as well and see what the next steps are, so.
Is there any, is anybody attending this selectmen's meeting tomorrow night to sort of represent the board at all?
We are welcome to attend, but they did not put us on the agenda.
And no invitation?
Yeah, so, but, you know, of course it's open meeting.
Right, I would encourage my colleagues if you can. With my new situation, I won't be in town, but if others can represent, I think that would be a great idea. Absolutely. Thank you.
So, 210, 2014. And once this is executed and signed, I'll put it on the website under the building project so that people can read it. And I will put the old stuff that we have up there still in a folder so it doesn't go away if people want to compare it. But I will make sure we get this one, so.
Great.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to presentations. Pat Myers?
I'm going to put a slide up on the, on the screen and I just want to give you guys an updated page with some information that came to light after the package went together. I'm just going to come up here for a few minutes.
Huh? Yes, I know. I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay, so what, what we've got here is what we call our cost center summary. We've spoken to most of this, but what we want to speak to today are the three big numbers that are up here highlighted in yellow. Because those, those are the drivers of the budget. We've got the central office, we've got special education, and we've got salaries. And as you'll see in the bottom, and what I, what I like to do here is those numbers there are, are not adjusted yet by any, any other revenues or offsets that we have. I've got that, I've got that down the bottom. But what I like to do is show you the real numbers before they're adjusted. You see the FY14 column, and those, those numbers are adjusted. So your, your increases and your percent changes are, were, were, at least at this part, at this point in time, at this step, we're showing non-adjusted against adjusted. But what we did in FY14 is down here at the bottom, we've, we've got the adjustments, which Ed Johns is no longer available to us. We get three years out of it. The retirements are already netted out. Those are about $200,000 because we had 14 retirements last year, I mean, for this, for this current year. Our additional Chapter 70 money was a disappointing 43.9. That's less than a quarter of a percent of our, of our total budget. However, we, we do get treated pretty generously by the DOE overall because they, they provide for about half of our budget. But as far as the increase goes, we just got the basic $25 per student last year. And as you'll see again this year, I mean, this year, and for next year, again, we got the basic minimum $25 per student. We had no additional town contribution. The town contribution was, was the same in FY14 as it was in FY13. We utilized Circuit Breaker, which is our special education reimbursement mechanism, as you'll see, to a, to a very good number, 500, over $563,000. We offset with Circuit Breaker. And we have a, as you know, a school choice program in our kindergarten. And that was worth about $95,000 to us. So that was a $702,000 offset with, you know, a couple hundred for, for the retirees, which I had already netted out. So, that brought us down to the 21, 362, 292 that we're at. And that was a combination of the town, town contribution of about 11.7 million and the Chapter 70 contribution of about 9.7 million. So, what we want to do is go over the FY15 portion. And again, the, as far as we're concerned with right now, these are unadjusted numbers because I want you to see the whole things and we'll get to the adjustments in a minute. But we've got three big drivers. Up in the central office, you'll see, and there's nothing to offset that one. The, the central office is driven, those are driven by Plymouth County Retirement and Health Insurance. Those are the two big drivers in that one. And what you'll see in, also in a few minutes, is this, that has even increased some more because our, in estimating what our Plymouth County Retirement was going to be, I used a 5% increase. And that, that added up to about $34,500. It actually was, and we just found out, it was an 11% increase. That added $46,000 more to our cost, our share of Plymouth County Retirement. Though Plymouth County Retirement is for non-Mass Teachers Retirement, support staff people. They pay half of their retirement to Plymouth County Retirement and the town picks up the other half. So, that's only 50% of it and they pay 50%, whereas the, those of us in MTRS pay 100%.
The town doesn't pay any of the teachers' or administrators' retirement.
Right.
It's all self-paid.
So, the other, the other part here, so that is, so that only reflects about $35,000. And, and the rest of it is due to, is due to health insurance. Now, the health insurance, as we're looking at it right now, is at about a 5% increase. Because we're, we're part of the Gateway Group and because it's part of a self-insured program, there are certain fees that the, that the carriers are charged, which, which would be Blue Cross and Harvard Pilgrim, that are going to be charged back to the subscribers due to the Affordable Care Act. Those, that in and of itself, if, if all else stayed the same, would be a 3% increase. Just fees to the Affordable Care Act. And we're looking, we're running very good this year and we're looking at about, you know, 2% more than that. And what I also did was add five additional plans in each the, the regular active health insurance and the retirees' health insurance. Now, we've got a line in our budget for each of those. And as people retire, they don't go off the budget. They just move from the active budget line to the, to the retiree budget line. And so, they don't go away and the health insurance doesn't go down. And then those people have to be hopefully replaced. And they're going to be replaced with somebody with health insurance. Or maybe they didn't have it and whoever we hire is going to take it. And then in the last couple of years too, with the way the economy's been and so forth, it's inevitable, once or twice a year, we get somebody, a current employee that, that comes up to the office and says, you know, "My, my spouse just lost his job. My spouse just lost her health insurance and I'm going to have to pick it up here." And then that's what's called a qualifying event. And then now they, now they come on our, our, our health insurance. So, that 230 is not going away. In fact, it's going up by 46,000. Now, the next number, special education. And we want to make sure that you know that the original line here in special education was reduced, not only by $563,000 in Circuit Breaker, but we also reduced the budget number itself by about an additional $100,000. So, it's not exactly fair to compare it, but we will compare it properly in a few minutes. So that's, so the 1.4 million is, is the real number. Now, again, that is basically just, there's no salaries in there. That's for services. Most of that is tuition-based for, for outside tuitions. Now, that is something that, again, is going to be offset. As we come down and we see Circuit Breaker down here, we're going to, we're planning on applying $510,000 of Circuit Breaker there. And in also working with our sped director and going back over things, it's, it's been a few months since the original numbers were in there and things changed. Speds, as you know, is very volatile. And it looks like there's maybe the possibility of reducing that by maybe about another $150,000. But, but even at that, when you reduce it by about $660,000, it still leaves a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Gap. It's a gap for the revenue.
Now, the last one that we want to talk to is, is salaries. And the only, the only potential offset we're going to have here that we're going to speak to at the moment is going to be school choice. Our school choice is, again, our program to take in kindergarten kids from other communities. And we're looking at that, that's about $5,000 apiece. And if they come in and there's a few that also continue on. And that's going to be worth about $90,000 to us, we estimate, this year. So, when we, when we look at what our expected adjustments are, about $642,000, net that off of the 1.5 million, we're still coming down to about $900,000. Except, we've got to add this back in. This was the additional amount of Plymouth County Retirement once we got the bill from the retirement board. The total bill to the town went up by $174,000. Our portion of that is 35 plus 46, about $81,000. And that's how much that alone went up for us. So, we come to that- So we come to that, and we're looking at about a $935,000 increase, which is about But let's go back a little bit and look at some of the, we've got some expected adjustments that we have known numbers on, but let's talk about some other things that may be some unknown numbers, such as retirements. We really don't know about retirements yet. We've got a couple of letters in, but I'm thinking possibly we may be looking at close to maybe $100,000 of retirement, that we can further reduce our bottom line on, or our gap on. And then...
Sorry, is that factoring in replacing, or is that eliminating the position? Is that the $100,000?
Well, it's, well, what it's going to be, what, the way that I'm looking at it with that is, is replacing the position at a lower...
So that's factoring that in?
A lower salary.
But the reality is, the reality is...
You may not be able to replace that position.
That's the reality.
For the moment, anyway, is how, we're going to, we'll get to something else in a minute. But an additional town contribution? Well, we didn't get one this year, and I don't really expect one for next year.
We've met three times in the last week and a half, and the town size is in equal straits, because they didn't get any more revenue either, and they have also the same increased expenses with health insurance and Plymouth County Retirement. So there really isn't, there isn't any gains to be had from the town. They're about $500,000 short over there.
There's really no new revenues.
Yeah.
There really, there really isn't. One of the biggest revenues we got is the, is the additional Chapter 70. And as small as it is, it's the biggest single revenue we get in, including the town.
The town had an increase of $7,000 in their state.
Yeah, so it's about, about $50,000 altogether, is the whole compilation of new revenue. Let's go to another line, which we would call other adjustments. Well, what are some of the other adjustments that might be? Well, we talked about the potential for special education, and then I don't really see anything else except the potential for staff reductions. And that's a distinct possibility at this point.
I have asked the principals to look at 12 people per school to meet this gap. I do not know how we will run our schools with 24 less teachers. But the only way, there's nothing else we can cut out. We have, we have half as much curriculum and instruction money as we had 10 years ago. We spend nothing on our classrooms, so to speak. I mean, Ruby, what was your, per pupil?
Yeah, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it's just, it's very, it's very low. It's not even enough to buy a textbook. So there is no place else to cut, and I don't know how else to look at this. I mean, we could be, maybe it'll go down by 100,000, you know? Maybe go down by 150, the gap. But we really are looking at almost a million-dollar gap between revenues and expenses. I did want to point out that in the last five years, our teachers have been extraordinarily cooperative with us, in that they took a zero, a zero, then they gave us back 45 days of an intended slight raise, and then they got 1.5%. And next year, they'll get 2%. Over five years, less than 3.5%. And there is no one else around us who's defunded their teacher salaries to that extent. I mean, most, most towns are giving between 4% and 7% over five years, and some over three years. So, and really, the difference between the salaries this year, which would be for 2015, which would be a 3.46% with a 2% raise, last year it was 3.41%. So it's only .05 difference from last year because of the retirements. We had 14 retirements, very high, the highest part of their salary range. And so peering into this year, those people are at the beginning of their salary range. So the difference is just nothing in what this actual salary increase is from last year to this year because of the retirement differential. So...
So Pat, I know we've kind of been...
It's bad.
All over here, there, and everywhere. Kind of give us the quick summary then. We're showing, before your adjustments, 1.5 million roughly. We're looking at roughly the 642 in adjustments down below. If that's very conservative, we don't know, there's a lot of variables there. We're looking somewhere between $900,000 and $1 million, roughly.
Well, really, if we want to look at this, it's, to put it, kind of summarize it real quickly, we're at 935, with a potential to reduce that by two, by maybe 250. So we're down to, you know, 675, maybe? And that's about where we are...
Best-case scenario.
Before we have to, before we have to get a little bit more drastic.
But there are some risks in taking that much away from special education, because...
There's some risk there too, yeah.
Karen did make a very good, tight budget, but we have extraordinary needs, and fewer children come at a higher cost for out-of-district placement. Schools are dependent on the revenue and Chapter 70 money, but out-of-district placements can raise their fees by however much they want. So they're not constrained. And, but yet, these students need these services. We don't want to deny them what they need, of course not, but it's, it is not good. And although it may not come to 24, if we get a few more retirements, we, it might, that would offset, be some offset as well. But, and just to make a picture for you, if I had to ask the elementary principal to eliminate 12 teachers, your class size in first grade would go from 22 to 32.5. Second grade would go from 21, 23, this is a range there, to 32. Third grade would go from 21, for 22 kids, to 32. Fourth grade would go from 24, 25 to 34. Fifth grade would go from 26, 27 to 30.
Well, that's the reality of it. What type of...
In the high school, 12 teachers at the high school impact more students.
Right.
You know, because each teacher has about 65 to 85. If you're a special art teacher, you have half the school. But, so it's, it's, this is the biggest impact of anything in my figures here.
So, and just so everything's clear, the budget presented is a level service budget. So really talking...
That is level serviced.
Right.
Correct. But I think we're going to, we may even have a hard time getting to level funded between the town contribution and Chapter 70 contribution. But, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, in the range of $700,000 over level funding.
The reason we can't, couldn't start really putting these numbers to the real test of the budget is, we always wait on the governor's budget, because you don't really know what any of your state revenue, what ballpark it's going to be in, until the governor makes the January budget. And this is as soon as we could figure this out, also because we were without a town administrator, we had an interim. But we didn't have a budget conference with the town until last week. So, and of course, their revenues from the state aren't known until after the governor's budget either. They know their real estate and tax revenues, but they don't know the rest of them. We're in a very precarious position.
So, and some of the challenges that we're, seem to have are, one, the state didn't give us potentially as much as we may have thought. And then the other is the insurance and health benefits have increased greater than we had planned. I'm just trying to get a sense of some of that shortfall in what we were thinking.
Well, I don't think the, the health insurance increased greater than planned.
No, because that was...
We always going to have a little bit, I actually think it did, it probably went up a little less than I thought, because I think, I think 5%, a 5% increase is...
Low.
Is not bad.
Right.
Not bad at all.
It's more that 11% increase from the retirement.
Now, that was a, that was a heavy hit.
Yeah.
And that's been a heavy hit for us, you know, for the last few years. They just, they give you the bill, you know, and they, there it is. They don't have to explain it.
The total amount for the town and the school together is about $178,000, $180,000, is it?
Just the increase.
Just the increase.
The whole thing is about $100,700, is the town's, is the town's total portion between the schools and the town.
All right, we'll open it up to the committee. Questions, comments?
I think, I think therein lies the crux of a lot of what's happening, is you talked about the unique issues that we face, and I think as a town, we do face a lot of unique issues. We have no commercial revenue in this town. And I know a few select meetings ago, Mr. Ward spoke about the downward swing right now of Cranberries and the difficulties that they're going to be facing. And, and I just see that all of these things that are need, last meeting, we talked a lot about the needs at the high school, and these things that, that, you know, we as a town need to find a way to pull some revenue into this town as a whole. Otherwise, I don't foresee how all these things are going to happen. I mean, you're talking about building a new elementary school and cutting 12 teachers at the same time. That's, I don't see where the logic is going to move forward with that. And there has to be a solution, because it is necessary. But there's a lot of things that are necessary right now. And I, and I think as a town, we really need to pull together to find a way. We have the North Carver Water District that's, there are so many different issues that are relating to the expenses in this town right now, that if we don't find a way to create some kind of revenue and pull something, and I don't know how it's all going to come together realistically.
The North Carver Water District, Patrick can let me get the words confused, is going to be a debt to the town around $150,000 this year, and it's going to grow for the next two or three or four years, up to $300,000, $400,000 that will come off the town, you know, because they're going, it has to be, and that's, that's a hu, that's a huge...
Huge.
Huge deficit, a debt that's growing, not diminishing, so...
Well, and as will the retirement, as it goes along. That's not something that's going to shrink and go away. And what I'm seeing is, and I guess that's to my point, I mean, as a community, we really need to find sustainable ways to find solutions for this. Otherwise, we're just putting Band-Aids on things that aren't going to work.
Well, I think to your point, it's beyond this room.
Very much so.
The answers aren't here. They've got to come from the community, because we look at the services that we're trying to provide for our students here in this community, and the answers aren't here in this room. We can propose things, but like you said, it's, there're bigger issues that are involved that needs a community effort. So, I concur. But we still have a task at hand on our end. Barry?
Every year, the same process happens, and I know the governor has proposed a budget. Does the state legislature come in and do an adjusted budget sometimes? And is that possible this year, or is the climate negative statewide as well as local?
For the past five years, it's ended up to be very much in line with what the governor's budget is. Mainly that's because there's very little revenue. But the state revenues are up. So I think the House, Senate will have some discourse about this. You know, there's a big push for universal preschool, which I'm 100% for, but I think we should have universal kindergarten first.
Okay.
I mean, kindergarten's not even required of the state of Massachusetts, and Carver happens to have a great full-day kindergarten program through the kindergarten grant. But some school systems, some of the kids get full day, and if you want full day, you have to pay for the other half of it. And so I think our first focus should be, but of course, no one asked me about that. But, so there is a lot of education dollars in the governor's budget. But they're not, they're not increasing the education dollars for the K-12. There's some new money allocated to community colleges and the state university system, but I don't, I don't see any real windfall for us.
Liz, when, when your time to finish with us is, has come, you need to set up a little rubric of qualifications for looking for different ways to come up with that funding, because you seem to have a good standard with that.
Well, I, you know, I have done my very best to fund everything we need to do in Carver, and we've been very good with grants, and we've been able to move forward immensely with our reading, writing, and math programs. But when I, when I have, if I have to take away almost 24 teachers, I can't imagine how we can keep the same quality. There's a point where you cannot do the same thing with that, without enough staff.
It becomes crowd control, really, a lot of it.
Yeah. And it's, it's not anything, I mean, unfortunately, there's been, never been a year in Carver where I've got to keep all of our staff. Even last year, we lost two positions. We didn't lose any teachers, because the, we just didn't replace two people who retired. But came here, and you had 198 teachers, and now we have 154. You had 32 more different support staff, custodians, secretaries, assistant athletic directors, things all over the place, you know, that do have a function, but those people are all gone. It's a, it's a repeating $2,683,000 that we don't spend every year, because I eliminated those positions. But now we're talking about adding another, close to $1 million, or if we got lucky, maybe 650. I don't know if I could write a rubric on that or on the school system for that, but I could try. It's, I, I'm not happy. I have, I'll have to go do budget presence to the staff, and it's, there's just nothing we can do about it. It's what drives me so crazy, is like, there's no grants to run a school system. You're right, the only way to do is change the financial structure of the town.
Hi, you know, give this a lot of thought. It is always on my mind, because I'm always knowing that this moment with the MSBA is coming, and how are we going to present this and move this forward in a, in a way that's going to make sense to everybody, because that's going to be the best way. And I don't, I, you know, I keep drawing blanks. And that, that seems to be the route, that we have to find a way, because all, everything that happens here is really on the residential tax base, and that's it. The weight, the full weight is on that, and it makes it really tough for people.
We haven't even considered the multimillion-dollar roof that we have to have at the high school, the multimillion-dollar wastewater treatment plants we have to have at the high school. And you know what?
Which I think makes it imperative that we need to start pushing these projects through, because you know, you wait another year, two years, three years, five years, the financial burden will be astronomical if we wait. I mean, if you think it's bad today, push these projects off another five years. You couldn't even fathom the financial burden on the taxpayer.
If we had gone forward with the school, the, the financial burden to the taxpayer after, you know, five years really decreases, and we would be paying off that debt, you know, it would be, that would have already been down and left a little margin room for doing the repairs we need to do at the middle high school. So, but we, that ship sailed.
I think, I think what James is trying, I think what James is trying to say is, we're struggling with an operational budget, when we're talking capital projects as well, and which is a challenge for us, I think, as a school committee, because we've got to function operationally, at the same time, trying to progress forward with our projects, with those other pieces. And if we're not meeting, if we're cutting here, then the challenges that we have continue to grow as we go into the community, because we're going to be asking for more. And I think that's the challenge we face before us right now.
And our population is growing at the mid, this midpoint in the year, in the schools, not leaps and bounds, but we had 10 students enroll in January.
Well...
And that's, you know, that's a lot in the middle of the year.
My sense is this, is we are at a crossroads. I mean, clearly, we're at a point where if you diminish the services that we provide, it gets worse and worse each year. So not only now are... each year. So, not only now are facilities falling before us, but so are our services. And then, I mean, let's be real about it, the elephant in the room, who's going to want to come to Carver? We've got a community that is based on a school system that is solid. We don't want to see that go away. And why do people come to a community? It's a lot of things. Our community doesn't offer a lot of business opportunities, so clearly they come to be a family here. Why is that? It's because of the schools, it's because of the athletics, it's because of the community that is presented there, which is based around the schools. And so, we are at a huge, this is, this is big. A big decision has to be made, and, and a difficult one. But, i-if we don't do it, I think the future, not to be so bold, but the community's future is, is at stake, so to speak. It's a pretty big deal. So, I think it's, it's something that, there's going to be a few more steps, I'm guessing, as we continue to see the numbers settle in. I think this is a reality check for us. We know what's before us. So, as Pat continues to update us on some of these numbers, and the reality of what those final numbers are going to be, we've got some big decisions ahead of us. So, I think, continue to get out there and talk to the community, help educate them on what is going on. I mean, it's, it's got to come down to the reality of what is before us. And if, if we want to see the great things that have begun, we want to see our first graders be great writers. We need to continue that. We want to see that grow. We don't want to see it go backwards. So, there's a lot of challenges, I think, before us this year, and.
And we should be adding a school resource officer, which there's a lot of talk about in town.
Sure.
And several other police positions, which are desperately needed. And, and we don't have a health teacher at the, at the middle school.
Right, I mean, right, this is presenting without some of those gaps that we still need, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, thank you for the information, and we'll continue to move forward with this process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As usual, the school committee doesn't consider to vote on the budget to a much later date, because it takes a while for all of these pieces to fall into a more permanent position.
Right.
Particularly, it looks like the health insurance is a little more solid than it has been in past years. But, so, we usually vote at, you know, hours before town meeting, but we can see how that progresses as we go towards the end of the year.
All right, thank you.
So, Pat, is anything in the buildings you want to update us on?
Oh, yes, just a couple of things. An update from Dave today is, not too bad. We've got a, over at the Governor John Carver building, we just got a little leaking steam radiator in, in one of the boys' bathrooms, need to be removed. It'll be fixed during the February break. Just a little leak, and not a problem. The shut-off valve is not closing completely. So, that's not going to be a, a big issue, but it's got to wait till, till the break, so we can shut down the heat and the water. A little bit more of a serious problem up at the middle high school, with our number-two boiler has a, one of the tubes are leaking. And tried, but unsuccessfully, to plug it, which was the easiest fix. That's not working. So, the main header shut-off valves are not holding the steam, so they're going to have to be drained down for repairs, and installation of new vol, new valves. But that will have to wait till the summer. In the meantime, even with a leak, the boiler can still be used as a backup if necessary.
So, the heat's not an issue right now?
No, it's not. And the, and as far as our district-wide goes, the, we've got our, Dave's been working diligently on the staff badges, getting the designs on the cards, and getting that, and the pictures and so forth, and it's going to put, be put into service over the next couple of weeks. And our security vendor, Lantel, is scheduled to come in this Thursday and Friday, and we're going to be installing the new visitor badging ID systems at each of the three main entrances. And again, and that is, that's about the, the three ID systems, coming up a cost of about $15,000. And just to remind you, we did get a $10,000 grant from Maya, our insurance company, to complete this project. And that's it.
Thank you. And then, Scott, did you want to say, mobilizing the community? And we have Jess here, too. She's a big part of that.
Good evening, everyone. So, last Tuesday evening, we had Mobilizing the Community meeting, I think what you talked about at the beginning of tonight's meeting. It was great to see that there were over 100 members of the community in attendance. This shows the clear concern of the community about substance abuse, and the community is ready to take a stand in support of those who are struggling with substance abuse, as well as taking preventative steps to curb the number of young people becoming addicted. In attendance was Chief Weston, Chief Doofly, Director of Emergency Management, Tom Walsh, Representative from Senator Keating's office, Superintendent Sorrell, Kim Dwayne, the School Adjustment Counselor, Paula Kibbe, school committee member, John Evans, Assistant Principal, Travis DeJosephes, who's the SAD advisor and social studies teacher up at the middle high school, I, myself, as well as 90-some members of the community.
And many students.
And students, Jess is here, Jess has been an active member of the group since its inception. You know, the meeting started with myself, I just did a review of the things that the school has been doing. Because we have had a number of proactive outreaches, and my focus in that presentation was really talking about, most of the things that we have done as a school have been school-based, and really, not community-based. We haven't taken that next step to really broaden it out to the community as a whole. We've made some attempts in that direction, but not successfully. And these are all things that I think we've talked about before, or has been mentioned to the committees as well. But I'll just briefly mention some of the outreaches that have been happening through the school. Couple times, we've done community table setups, where we all just have information that we'll hand out to members of the community about how to have a 10-minute conversation with your son and daughter about substance abuse, because the SAD research says that parental disapproval is the number-one reason why students do not involve themselves in any kind of substance abuse. Well, last year, we did a social hosting presentation around prom time, talking about what the legal liabilities are if families or adults provide alcohol to minors. Paula actually has created a Facebook page, Mobilizing the Community Carver, which is an active page. If you go to Facebook and just search Mobilizing the Community, you'll see the page, and there's been some recent posts put up there. We actually, within the school, we're running two substance abuse groups. One's called the Insight Group, which is for 12 students who have self-identified as struggling with substances currently. And this, we're actually in our third year, this spring, we'll be running that group for the third time. And we also have a group called the Children of Promise Group, which is for students who have a family member or a friend who's struggling with substances. And again, this year, we're going to have about 10 students in that group, which will be in the spring. Again, third year, we're running that group. And we've run that in our coordination with the Karen Treatment Center. This year, for the first time, we're implementing a curriculum. It's called the Botfend Life Skills Curriculum. We purchased it for grades seven through nine, and this year, we're having it taught to eighth-grade students. It's a train-the-trainer model, so our health teachers at the middle school and the high school have been attending the presentations to the eighth-grade students. They'll be fully trained to implement the program, and next year, our intention is to do it grades seven through nine, using our own staff, because they'll be trained. And the focus of the Botfend Life Skills, it's really, instead of a one-time presentation, it's, it's curriculum-based on how to make good decisions, around a range of issues. So, it really is about decision-making, but the focus really is, does go towards substances. This year, on April 27th, we're going to be doing a brain drain presentation for all students in grades nine through 12. Those will be individual grade-level meetings, which will talk about the, the chemical effects on the brain of substance abuse. We've done a couple of what we call sticker shock campaigns. I think Jess has been involved in those, where they've gone out and they've, in coordination with the Carver Police and the local distributors of the local liquor stores, they've put information on the packaging about, basically, it's illegal to provide alcohol to minors. And they've done that around Thanksgiving the last two years. And we've also done some, a program called Buzz Check, and we had a group of students who are trained as peer leaders, who've implemented this in our ninth and 10th grade advisory program. We've done this in March each of the last two years through our advisory, to have a discussion about making good decisions around substances. So, I kind of did a review of those are the things the school have been doing. But, even those, all of those things, most of them are really school-based. You know, a couple of them touch on the community, the table setups do a little bit. Obviously, we're working in coordination with the police for the sticker campaign. That involves the larger community. But we felt like a lot of the, a lot of things we have been doing haven't involved the entire community, and that's what we're looking for. And there was a clear support from the people there that we want to start doing some more community-based activities. Several people shared stories of friends and families who struggle with substances, and just had a large discussion of that impact, the, the impact of substance abuse on this community over the last couple of years. And really, beyond school age, we had a lot of discussions about people 18 to 25, that that really seems to be a group that, that's struggling. And there was really consensus that we need to just work together more as a community and do some more direct outreach. There's clear support for a school resource officer, as Elizabeth has mentioned, so like, the group talked about that a little bit. And ultimately, our goal is at our next meeting, which is Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:30 in the Library Media Center, to nail down some specific targeted interventions that we can do through full-scale community outreach. We talked about some possible ideas, suggestions, and we're looking to just decide on some specifics at our next meeting and to move forward. But I think the most important part of the night was this group of 100 members of the Carver community staying together to send a clear message that we need to work together to do what we can to curb substance abuse within Carver. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions you have about Mobilizing the Community group.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, is there a, do you have like a hard copy flyer for, for that meeting at all? I mean, I know it's on Facebook and out there, but.
We, we did talk about how we've been inviting people to participate in the meeting, and we said that we need to do a better job of that. So, at this time, I don't, I don't have a hard copy flyer with me. But what we had talked about doing was doing some more direct outreach to the elementary school. It's actually in my notes in this. Good thing. Is that there was a concern that, when we've publicized the Mobilizing the Community meetings, that our focus has really been on high-school-age students. And, and there was a, a clear message from the people there, that people at the elementary school, their parents, felt like they didn't really understand or know what was going on. So, we made a commitment to do through emails, connected, a flyer is a great idea, that would go directly out to all elementary-age students, inviting those parents to the community forum. And then using Facebook. Obviously, I think the town selectmen, this time around, did a great job in terms of publicizing our meeting, and I think that really puts some emphasis and push on.
They called me in the morning and asked me to make up a flyer, so I did. And then they put it in town hall and around town, so.
So, we can definitely do a flyer to, and I would think towards elementary-age students, and put it up around town, to make sure we maintain that flow. And even looking at the Facebook page, there's been a lot of posts of people saying, "I missed the meeting, but I want to make the next one. I'm going to plan on doing March 4th," because we want to keep.
We might have to meet in the cafeteria.
Yeah, we might have to pick a different location. If we're going to be 100 strong, we're going to, might have to pick a different location.
It's your problem then.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, to me, it's a sign that when the community starts to come together, we work together as a community, this is what can happen. And it's a great start. So, it's exciting to see the work that was started, and hopefully, we'll continue.
James mentioned, too, that we could get the light to babysit, and maybe more young families could be able to come, because we don't meet for a long time.
Yeah, hour, hour and a half.
Well, I think there's, I know, obviously, there's a lot of neighborhoods in Carver that are affected, but my, my neighborhood seems to have a, an impact with that some. And I, I even take some flyers and go door-to-door with some of that, just to get that word out there. So, you know, I think it's something that's good. I wish we could have made the last meeting, but we ran into issues. And I'd like to get the word out as much as possible, because I think, there's a lot of concern about it. And, and sometimes, it's just people, you know, obviously, schedules and life is busy, but if, you can catch them at that right moment, at that right time.
There are, how many, Meredith, on our school app, how many families?
About 900, between the two schools. We have 900 devices.
Devices. So, that's really more than half of our people, and we can send out pushes, which people have already signed up to receive information about. So, we can do some pushes, which goes to the school people for sure, and then the community people, you know, will continue with.
Yeah, and I think that's my concern, because I think what Scott was, was saying was really powerful, that, and, and I heard at one of the selectmen's meetings, and a few people mentioned that, outside of the school families, there's a lot of community that, that seems to be willing to be involved and be a part of this.
Yes, definitely.
And really getting out to them, to be able to let them know effectively when it's going to happen is a.
We have to do a better job of that.
Good idea.
And ultimately, that was the goal of the group that was created. So, the name in itself is Mobilizing the Community. And I think we've done a good job of mobilizing the school community, but not the greater Carver community. And so, I think we have to improve our efforts in that way.
So, we've gone from six or eight consistent members to 100.
Hopefully, hopefully, we still have 100 next meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, we look forward to seeing everybody on Tuesday, March 4th.
At what time?
6:30.
6:30.
And location to be determined.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And the last item of business before the school committee brings up any of theirs is that we do have field trip to go to the Great East Music Festival, and Six Flags, and it's, I highly recommend it. It's, you know, outside of the ring, where they can just go without your, your permission. So, we need to get the school committees.
Sure.
Permission.
So, we have before us a field trip. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the Great East Music Festival. And did you also say Six Flags?
Well, yeah, it's at Six Flags.
It's at Six Flags.
Yeah. At a high school on Six Flags.
We like a, the motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
And that's all my.
Thank you, Liz.
Business.
With that, we'll open up the school committee, the reports this evening. Barry?
Let's be quick about this. A couple of things I've attended, I wanted to let you know. We've been, Gina and I have been alternating in the Capital Outlay Committee.
That's correct.
So, I'm up next for Saturday. That's the first one I've ever been to. Very informative, as usual. It just shows me, just like this discussion here, there are other community members working hard at our Capital Outlay projects. And it just gives you some great insight into all the planning that takes place to make our town tick. And, you know, and like we've been saying all meeting, I won't rehash it, but we've got to work hard to keep it, keep it the trend that we're on. We don't want to back up, whether it's this drug problem, or the financing problem. But anyways, Capital Outlay, I'm up next, Gina, and then we'll regroup.
You got it.
All right. And then the other thing I attended was, I forgot the official name of it, but the Financial Advisory Committee.
Yes.
So, again, that's when I kind of got a preview that the town is going to be tight. And then, of course, we saw what we saw tonight, and that kind of verified it. But it's not just the school, it's the town. So, I like what James has been saying all night. I think, you know, we have a great candidate in the room, Miss Dunham. I'll keep pushing for you. But, we got big plans for the big community to, to make a change. I love the rural environment myself, been here 40 years, like it. But, I sound a little like, like Dana Carvey doing George Bush. But, however, if we have to change a little bit, so be it. And I'm sure the planning can take place to do that, whether it's a district or North Carver, or South Carver, or wherever. But yes, you're absolutely right, James. Got to do something to make this especially successful for the school. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Barry?
I guess, just briefly, you know, I, I could testify to be one of those families that moved to Carver for the schools. That's why we came here. We wanted that small school environment. And I would hate to see this deteriorate to a system that, that's not going to work, because we couldn't find a way to solve the problems that we had. And I think if we can really pull together as a community in, in these same sort of circumstances that they're doing, that, that there are solutions to this, and we can find a way to make this happen. I think we just have to stay cohesive in making sure that that happens. That's really the key to it. And making sure those communication lines are open between the different entities in the town, so that we're working towards the same goal, because we all really want the same thing. Everybody admits we need a new school. There's no posturing around it. It's what needs to be done. And we just have to find the correct way to make that happen.
Smart choices, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Make smart choices.
Well, isn't, part of what your, your program was about, what you were saying, making the smart choices, making the right decisions. It, it doesn't matter what context that's applied to, as adults and as communities, it's the best example for the kids that are there, that we, as adults, we still need to find this compromise and make this work in order to make this move forward. And, and I think we've got the community that can do it. We've just got to stay open-minded and, and make sure we're communicating to make sure that happens.
Thanks, James.
Smart choices.
Smart choices. Sounds good. Yeah, I mean, I think we've had a lot of great discussions tonight, and I think, just want to encourage that the community continues this. I think, as we said, House divided cannot stand. We don't want to see that anymore. I think we've seen a lot of encouraging things in our community over the last year or so. A lot of great strides in trying to pull various elected officials together to help make that happen. I'm going to encourage that that continue. As we move forward in this process with the MSBA, I'm excited to see those steps move forward. But in the same respect, there are some hu-